All right, so we started our meeting in executive session. We had a brief executive session. This is the March 28th meeting of the Plimpton Selectmen. In executive session, we voted to enter an agreement with the town administrator for, to secure her services for another three years. So Liz, should we vote on that? And then make you the appointment?
I would.
Okay, all right. So I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen enter into an agreement with the town administrator to secure her services for, as the town administrator for the next three years. And is the effective date, is it immediately, Liz, or is it when your current contract expires?
It would be today's date and three years from today.
Okay, so the, the
The old one.
Okay, so the term of the agreement would be from
March 28th of 2022 to March 28th of 2025.
Okay. All right, so we've got a motion. Is there any discussion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Trainer. Oh, it looks like he's frozen up.
Frozen.
Okay, all right, Mark?
Yes.
Roll call vote, yes? All right, Mrs. Joy, yes, okay. All right, yeah, it looks like John is frozen up.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, we did have a unanimous vote in open session to enter into the agreement, so.
I think he's coming back in a minute.
Okay. Well, we can take that up when he gets back, just for the record. All right, so having entered into the agreement with Liz, I will make a motion that we appoint Elizabeth Dennehy, the town administrator, through March 28th, 2025. Do we have a second, Mark? All right, roll call vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, and
Can we leave that open just for a second, assuming John's going to come back to, just so that can go in as a 3-0?
Yeah, absolutely. Is
Do you want to do the animal inspector?
Yeah, why don't we, are you okay with us doing the animal inspector, Mark, and not being 3-0? Okay.
I, I am.
Okay, all right, I'll make a motion, this is
Surprisingly similar positions.
True, that's true. Two-legged versus four-legged.
Right.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we appoint Brian Kling as animal inspector with the effective date of May 1st, 2022 through April 30th, 2023.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all right, roll call vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Joy, yes?
And John's connecting.
Hi, John, welcome back. Okay, so we
My internet just went away.
Oh, it looks like you're, you're, you're in and out. All right, so we wanted to hold off, we, I made a motion that we enter into, basically just affirm our vote in executive session. So the contract with Liz would be effective today, March 28th, 2022 through March 28th, 2025. So Mark made the second roll call vote, so I'll call for a roll call vote at this point, roll call vote, Mr. Trainer, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes, okay, and then the follow-up, John, is to appoint Liz Dennehy, the town administrator, through March 28th, 2025? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay, roll call vote, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes, okay, and then we'd already done Brian's appointment while we were waiting for you, John, so that one's all set for Brian Kling as the inspector of animals. So next item on the agenda is the use of town property request, the Old Town House for, I believe, the Plymouth Meditation Group. Is Siobhan on? Siobhan Green? Okay.
Can I clarify a little on that?
Yeah.
I, I think I was a little confused last week. This isn't actually the Plymouth Zen Group that would be doing this. This is Siobhan, who has been a member of the Plymouth Zen Group for, for, for quite a while. So it's essentially a resident, a private citizen, wanting to put together meditation opportunity for town citizens along the way. And I, I, I had misunderstood, actually, last week, who was making this request. So I'll just say, along the way, that I've known Siobhan for a really long time and admire her work in meditation and really responsible individual. I, I, I think there is this question that we haven't fully addressed yet on, on how we will decide who might use town, the Old Town House and who not. But in terms of the smaller question of, is this a reasonable thing to consider? I, I can certainly give high marks to the person that has made the application.
I, I, I don't know her, I don't believe, at least by name, I know of her name. I'm, I'm a little concerned and just that, you know, insurance, those types of things, who, who's the focus for all this within the town government? So I'm kind of following along what Mark's saying. I'm not against it, but I would like to see us clarify and make sure that the town's protected.
No, I agree with, with both of you, and I, I worked with Sean or Siobhan on the, the Tersentennial Committee, and, and I agree, she's a very fine individual and a hard worker and, and very committed to whatever she takes on. But my question is, when it's an outside group like this, should there be some type of fee that's charged to use the, the facility? Because it will need to be cleaned and, and she's not affiliated with Council on Aging or any town group?
That's, that's why I'm wondering if we should, you know, like the Council on Aging or a board should be the focus. We don't charge the, the fitness group. And in a sense, we don't charge the Plimpton Historical Society, it's a dog.
So I think John may have frozen again, unfortunately.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't want to make the issue more complicated than need be, but we had kind of entertained the possibility of okaying this application on a trial basis. I mean, I think we have some work to do to make some guidelines and rules on this, and we just haven't done it yet. And I, I wonder if, you know, agreeing to this as, on a trial basis, while we sit down and hash out some guidelines.
Oh, yeah, we lost John again.
Excuse me, hello?
Hi, Bree.
Hi, she was willing to also have the waiver signed by each person who attended. And this was going to be at no charge to any resident of the town. As well, I don't know if that helps you in any way. But I had suggested having the waiver and just having that reworded where it just references Zumba class. And having that waiver and it changed over to more of a general, we wouldn't be responsible.
Thanks, Bree. So, Mark, are you saying that the, the exercise groups aren't really affiliated with the Council on Aging?
Oh, I don't know that.
Okay.
I don't know that.
I apologize.
No, no worries, John, so we're still talking about the meditation group using the, the town property. Do you know, are the fitness groups that use the Old Town House, are they affiliated with the Council on Aging?
Which ones, I'm sorry?
The, the two groups, the, that do fitness?
The fitness group is sponsored, the fitness group is sponsored by the, by the Council on Aging.
But the Tai Chi group is not?
I don't believe they're doing that anymore, that's gone away.
Okay, so the fitness group, so the only group that we have using that facility for exercise is sponsored by the Council on Aging?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
So I guess the focus is, how do we, how do we move forward so that we can be very clear when people approach us?
That's what Mark suggested too, that we work out some type of policy or use guidelines.
I'm all in favor of seeing the building used, but I want to just make sure that, especially on the insurance that we're covered.
Well, and Bree had said that Siobhan was going to get waivers signed by everyone who was in participation, but I don't know if she's going to have the, any type of insurance that we typically require to use the building. Do you know, Bree? She does not.
She does not have the insurance. This was something that was asked of her, I don't know if she did meditation before in the building, because she had mentioned the Historical Society before. And, but not that, she actually wrote something to us all. Through pandemic, I was a regular sitter at the Plymouth Zen Group for 10 years. I was the vice abbot of the group at that time. When the pandemic forced many places to close, we too had lost our space to practice meditation. The group continued its practice via Zoom. For many of us, the Zoom world just did not feel the same as sitting among others. And for some of us, our practice of meditation came to a halt. I thought it was important not to change. We charged money for meditation, so there would be no fee. The group is a non-denominational and would welcome anyone that wants to learn to sit meditation or has an ongoing practice and would like to sit with others. I understand there are costs of using the building, so perhaps we could have a donation box for those who can make a donation for the use of the hall. Basically what she's saying.
Okay.
She has several people already interested and hopes the group will grow. He was hoping for Wednesday night from 7:00 to 8:30, to make an easier time for moms and dads and working folks to join the group. I hope you do consider my request, and if granted, I hope I may see some of you there to practice with us.
I wonder if Siobhan could work with the Cultural Council? And if they might sponsor this type of activity?
I can reach out to Heather.
I don't know, what do, John and Mark, what do you think about her working with a town group? I don't know if it makes a difference.
I, I don't know if it does or not either, I mean, I think that's fine. I, I, it seems to me that maybe we need to check with insurance. I'm not sure, maybe we need to check a very quick consult with town council as well. And again, I, I mean, I think there are two things here, right? This application, and we should, we need to just grab hold of this and create a process. But maybe they're two separate things.
I, I think you're, I think you're right, Mark. I think we need a process and we'll just use this as the test case to make it happen. I don't know whether it's Cultural Council. I know one of the benefits of having the fitness group under the Council of Aging was that they were, that the Council on Aging could give them grants. So that the instructor is given a, a per diem, some sort of a, you know, an amount each month or each year, I forget how it works. And I would assume that maybe something like this Zen Council, if it was under Cultural Council, maybe they'd be applicable for some sort of a, you know, grant down the road, who knows?
Well, they do get grant money.
Yeah.
Each year. I don't know if Nate's still involved.
I believe he is.
Yeah, I think he might be the chair of the Cultural Council here, Heather. So what's the next step? Do we want to say that we're interested in this, but we've got some items we need to work out before we can make this happen?
Yeah, my draw this would be to say just what you said and tell them we're, we need to have a process, they've come forward, we want to support them, but we want to get the process in place.
Okay.
And then our, our actions would be Bree checking with the legal, Liz checking with town council.
I support that.
Mm-hmm. Okay, all right, so do you want to keep this on the agenda? I mean, we may have this squared away by our next meeting, where we could officially take a vote at this point, at that point, and, and maybe Siobhan would be with us for that meeting.
That'd be great.
Okay, all right, that sounds good. So everybody's got their, their marching orders to try to figure this one out. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is Yeah, go ahead, Bree.
Excuse me, did you want me to reach out to cultural council?
Could you, Bree? Yeah, why don't you reach out to Cultural Council and see if, if they would have any interest in working with Siobhan to sponsor this type of activity at the Old Town House?
Okay.
You know, if, if we're going that way, there's that specific question, and maybe that's the route to process. And I, there might be the biggest, bigger question to them is if they would be willing to be the oversight or whatever to any of these applications. And the nice thing is that kind of gives an intention, a thrust, that the things that we would be willing to happen there are things of cultural benefit to citizens.
Yeah, I would still like to keep the fitness group under Council on Aging because of the age.
Yeah, and I, I, I don't mean to exclude that, but
Okay, okay.
In general, would the council, would Cultural Council be willing?
I think one of the things we're going to have to think about too is if a resident says, for instance, they want to have, you know, I'm trying to get my thoughts together, but if they wanted to meet and have with children there. I mean, there's implications there. And I know in the past, back when the Historical Society was kind of managing the process, they, they said, no, they were afraid of some of the safety issues. So there's implications that we need to think through there.
The Girl Scouts did use it for several years, they used to do a wreath when they would make the wreath. I know that they had a couple of meetings there when they've gone over from being a Brownie to a Girl Scout, I think it's the bridge ceremony. And I know there was a couple of art activities they did there.
And at one point, the Cub Scouts were meeting there.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, it's something I'd like to see happen, I just want to make sure we're protected.
Yeah. I did send this form to Ligo already, and I'll do a follow-up with them.
Great, thank you, Bree. All right, yeah, and that's, I think that's a good idea, Mark, to see if the Cultural Council would be willing to, to kind of take all of these on under their umbrella as, you know, because they are cultural events, other activities of this nature. So, yeah, more to come, interesting. All right, so the next item on the agenda is discussion regarding the structure of meeting agenda. And I think, John, this one was yours.
No, I think it's yours, because I think the way this came was that I had proposed that adding to the agenda sort of a selectman's update. And I had specific things that I've been doing that I wanted to inform the board, but also through the board to the broader public that looks in on these.
Okay, all right. So, but you didn't, you do have specific things that you wanted to, to talk about?
Yeah, it's been, you know, over the last, we've met twice over the last six weeks. And if you want, I'll just go down some of the things I've been sort of doing. And in a sense, when I go, one of the things I set up was a meeting between the new Cisco president, Jane Brett, and our state rep, Kathy Lenater, and the executive director of the Chamber of, Plymouth Chamber of Commerce, Amy Naples. And when I do that, I, Liz and I and Steve Silver had already met with Jane Brett prior to this meeting. And it came out of that meeting. But in a sense, they're not doing it because I'm here as a resident, they're doing it because John Trainer is a part of the Selectmen. So I, in effect, represent the board, us three. And it was a great meeting, and these are the things I'm trying to do as I go around town. I do updates with the Council on Aging every other month. I'm on their agenda where I give an overview of what's going on from a selectman's perspective. I do that same thing with every other month with the Upland Club Board of Directors. I have done it in the past with the library, but they did not have a quorum and COVID kind of cut that off. I'm going to propose that I do that again now that they've got a quorum. I met with, today I met with Jay Patikos, who is Vice President of Development for Mass Development. Mass Development is a quasi-state government association, much like the MBTA, that tries to work with towns that are economically strapped, should we say, to find funding for projects that they might not be able to afford. And this came out of a meeting that I had, a personal meeting I had with the Plymouth Chamber of Commerce. And they were very interested in at least knowing more about Plimpton, so I took Jay around and showed him Cisco and Hubble and rode him around town. And in fact, Liz, you may get a call from him. He just wants to follow up, I don't know that there's an opportunity here, but I can't hurt to at least be talking to them, because there may be grants and funds that somehow we may qualify as a small town. So the question, I guess, is, do we put those on the agenda? And if we don't do it, then how do we get, you know, is, I'm sure you're doing the same thing, Christine, when you talk to the school committee, I mean, you know, we need a way of broadcasting what the selectmen are doing.
Mark, what are your thoughts on this?
Well, look, I appreciate all that work, John, and I, I think all three of us do things like that or similar things. I, so that's point one. Point two, it has been a tradition for quite a while, at least for the last decade, on this board, that any selectman can request items put on the agenda. My only concern is, I, I, I am not totally comfortable structuring this as a selectman update. I, I see it more as, we certainly all have these meetings with various groups and nurture relationships and learn more about possibilities. But ultimately, and act as ambassadors of various sorts. But ultimately, that's in service of becoming an agenda item, something that we vote on, or at least something where there is specific information to be presented. So my preference is, out of this work that each one of us do, a time would come that maybe there's a proposal that needs to be voted on, or a time might come that there is time for a discussion of something moving forward. And I would simply do that the way we've always done it, is that each of us have requested an agenda item that's put on the agenda and that, that we present. I would just avoid the selectman's update, just in that it might sort of bring forth some questions about open meeting law or an election law. So, I mean, I'm totally in favor of sharing information, I'm totally in favor of the work that all of us do. I would just present it in the agenda a little differently than you proposed.
So how are you suggesting we present it in the agenda?
That, you know, if out of a particular meeting is a proposal, but that be put forth as an agenda item, or if there's specific information that came out of one of these ventures, that the request for an agenda item to present the stuff that's coming out of that meeting.
I'm a little uncomfortable that, in effect, what we're saying is, unless there is a specific proposal that's going to be voted on, then it shouldn't be brought before the, before the Board of Selectmen in this venue.
No, 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 I'm not saying that at all. I mean, I, I think it, it, it could easily be that you'd want to request an agenda item that might be report on meeting with Cisco, or report on meeting with, with Chamber of Commerce. I'm totally fine on that.
Okay.
I'm glad to have that.
Well, fine, I'll put them on that way, I mean, it's a little change in the wording, but it gets the same thing. I, I just think it's important that when we go around, that we, we are representing all three of us. And that all three of us are sort of aware of what we're doing. And there won't always be, for instance, like the Cisco meeting, there wasn't something that I can point to and say, this is going to result in X. But I do feel it was a strong indication to Cisco that how we value them and we're probably, we're willing to bring people forward that potentially can help them, either at the state level or the county chamber of commerce level.
I, no, go ahead, John.
Just to finish up on Cisco, because one interesting thing came out that may result in something. Their biggest issue right now is drivers. People who have their CDL license, and this is not just Cisco, this is across the United States, getting qualified drivers, and they, they have classes going that they run. It turns out that if you get, if you go through Massachusetts and get the license from Massachusetts, it's only for interstate, which means it's not able to be used in New Hampshire, Maine. And they want to get Massachusetts to change, so when it's when they qualify, they get an interstate license. And Kathy took that as a, as an item to go off and look into and see if she could work that. But it's very important to them, because, you know, that's a main thrust of their business. So in, in, in the salary range, even, they admitted that these drivers work very hard, but they make a six-figure income. So it's, you know, for people who are willing to do that, it's, it can be lucrative.
Yeah, and that would have been nice to put something like that on the agenda, where it could definitely be a benefit to residents. But, I mean, it just, I, sometimes I feel like the open meeting law, while the intent is good, it really does kind of keep us with, things need to be on the agenda, and we really can't be ambiguous, or there can't be ambiguity in, in the agenda. So I would want specifics. So, um, I would want, um, specifics for the agenda so that if people were interested, that they were able to participate. And then just for myself, I always worry, I mean, I, there's, there's so many things we do, um, behind the scenes. Most everything, or a lot of it doesn't require action or coming to the board. A lot of it's just goodwill and, um, and working to, um, to help benefit, um, the residents with the different commissions and committees that, um, that we represent the town on. So I wouldn't have a lot to bring forward unless there was something that, uh, required action. A lot of it would just be, um, you know, minor updates of things that we're, we're working on, which I typically keep to myself. I just don't want for me to seem like I'm campaigning. That's always, um, my fear is that, um, you know, that this could be seen as, um, campaigning. So I typically don't do it.
I, I tend to have a problem with that because I feel like I ran on communications and transparency. I don't see this as campaigning at all. I think it's an update to the residents of the selectmen's work in the, what they're supposed to be working.
All right. Well, I think that if, um, we've got specific items, John, that you want to put on the agenda to discuss, um, your reports, then, you know, I think we can, we can do that. Mark, are you okay with that? Specific items?
I'm okay with that. I, uh, I've, I've sort of amused that so much of the work of town government has, happens in the parking lot, um, in front of Townhouse. Or in my case, on the boardwalk in terms of Churchill Park, in terms of ambassadorial things that we do. And, you know, so that's just a different level of stuff, but, um, and I'm glad we had this discussion.
Yeah. And John, you're doing a lot of really great work and it is, um, it's, it's nice to hear about it. So thank you for bringing that forward. So you'll, uh, work with Liz to have, um, to be more specific about, um, what you want to report on?
Uh, we'll see. Yeah, we'll see how that goes.
Okay. All right. So Liz, town meeting preparations.
So we've received a number of articles in, um, in fact, some just came in a little while ago. I believe based on the bylaw, um, that the warrant closes automatically. I think it's eight PM this evening. So we have a lot going on with that, a lot to work with. My plan is to get an updated spreadsheet showing everything. We've also had a lot of numbers finalized this afternoon. Um, so I'll get out an updated spreadsheet to everyone sometime early tomorrow. And I've already started formatting work on both warrants, but I'm going to start plugging the articles into the warrants so we can kind of see what we're working with. There are a few that, excuse me, that I have, um, placeholders for. And so I'm going to have to work with some of those boards and committees on getting the final language. Because even though it sounds like it's far off, um, we need time for legal counsel to review all of that language and everything. So seems like a number of articles that are not financially related. Um, a number of zoning bylaw things that bylaw review committee is working on. We have a number of placeholders for solar pilot agreements and things of that nature. So I expect some of that to shake out in the next week or two. We're also, um, well underway with the budgeting process. And, um, once I have the date from finance committee for when they're going to be going over some of the articles, um, I can pass it by you in case, you know, you're interested in, in tuning into that meeting. We're still planning as of right now to have that customary final meeting where you vote your recommendations and finance committee votes theirs on, um, Monday, April 25th, I believe is, is our meeting date for that. I don't have the calendar right in front of me, but it's the last Monday in April, um, like we generally do. So, we can post our meeting and then FinCom can post the same information for theirs. But they are going to be meeting, um, at least one or two, possibly even three more times in April prior to then, for the purposes of kind of finalizing everything. So I'm happy to pass along those, those dates. So far, so good as far as going through some of the departmental level budgets. I'm working with the finance committee now on refining some numbers for the fire department budgets. Some more to come on that, but I think we're in a good spot, given the timeframe and where we're at.
Liz, do you have a sense of when we need to, for the placeholder articles, when they need to be complete in terms of town council?
Ideally, if we could get them by next Monday, so a week from this evening and get it off to town council. Cause it takes a little bit, especially given the number of them, say, that are coming from bylaw review, for example. You know, it's not a problem or anything, but it just, it takes me a little bit formatting wise to get them plugged in. And I'd like to get everything off to council with enough time that if they have comments that are anything too significant, especially on some of those bylaw change ones, that we have an opportunity to circle back with that board or committee so that no one's taken by surprise if there is an issue with something.
So do some of the bylaw, um, articles have to go through planning or need a public?
Yes. So, so anything that involves a change to the, excuse me, to the zoning bylaws, um, any zoning bylaw changes require a public hearing by the planning board. And I was told that the, the planning board will actually be sponsoring these articles. So that should go pretty smoothly. They'll just incorporate it as part of their process. But as far as council reviewing the warrant as a whole, I think it's important to get those in there and get it off to them sooner rather than later.
But if there are last minute changes, even after council takes a look, we, we still have room on that, uh, right up to the 25th of April.
Correct.
Liz, any sense when we should close the special?
So in the past, you had been doing it, um, I think the past two years now, we've just done it kind of as a matter of course, like on today's date. I have, I believe, everything for that. Um, some of them are in the form of placeholders, like I said. If you wanted to give people an extra few days to get something in for the special, you could take a vote to have it close maybe at the end of this week, like Friday's date. Might make sense and give people a little bit longer to get them in, but.
My recollection is that, uh, by law, you have a week after the, uh, regular warrant articles.
I don't know that, I thought it was silent for the special. But if that's the case, you could always vote it for April 4th. I don't think we're going to have a run on articles for the special. Why don't you vote for it to close? Do you want to do April 4th or do you want to wait longer than that? I'm just trying to think about council's review.
Yeah, April 4th is fine.
You okay with April 4th, Mark?
I, I am. Uh, Liz, we spoke earlier today about moving the professional services for the North Cardboard project from, um, annual town meeting to special.
They already moved it in the spreadsheet.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, um, so I'll make a motion that, um, the selectmen close the, uh, warrant for the special town meeting, eight PM on April 4th. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Uh, roll call vote, Mr. Trainer.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
All right, Mrs. Joy, yes. All right. So we've got, uh, the special closed as well. All right, anything else, Liz?
Um, not town meeting related, no.
Okay.
If you see one moment, did you vote to close the annual?
We don't have to close the annual.
Oh, you don't have to. Okay. All right. Thank you.
No, it closes, um, by, um, by law, Bree.
Okay.
Okay, you're welcome. Well, um, you're up. Warrant's paid.
Hello. Five thousand eight hundred twenty-seven dollars sixty-six cents. It was the normal ever source as always.
Okay.
Verizon, we had a small, um, ADT Protection One invoice, a quarterly invoice. We had a small insurance adding vehicles, or the change of vehicles. Older ones, newer ones, and that's about it.
Very good. All right. Thank you, Bree. All right, Liz, town administrators update.
So I placed the order for the flags, the, um, telephone pole mounted flags that will run from the center of town to the old townhouse. Um, this was something that I think John had brought forth. Um, it may have even been a couple of years ago now and it's been kind of sitting on the projects and priorities list. I checked in with Roxanne Whitbeck and she thinks that she has some funding available for this purpose. And I also checked with the highway department and as soon as these flag kits come in, they are willing to, you know, get up there and get the brackets mounted for them. So it seems right now like we'll have them in time for Memorial Day. I asked Bree to reach back out to them and, and confirm our order and everything. So they said that, you know, six weeks or so from when we ordered them. So I don't see any problem as far as having them installed in time for Memorial Day. And the nice part will be then we'll have the brackets already mounted. So in the future, if we ever, I don't know if there was a grant project or something through the cultural council, maybe we could order some of the Deborah Sampson more like the town flags and do something a little more creative going forward. But, um, you know, I think that this is a good start. I also, at John's request, and I thought it was a good idea, I reached out to the Brockton Mayor's Office to find out what they have on file as far as a flag policy. That had been another item that was kind of on the projects and priorities list. I know we had discussed it a couple of times. So I'll see what we can put together as far as that goes. That might be helpful. Additionally, um, Bree had wanted to need to let everybody know that they have started preparations for Memorial Day. Um, I don't know if Bree has anything that she wants to add to that.
No, I've just reached out to a few people in town. Hopefully we'll get some antique vehicles involved like we did a couple of years back. And, um, Liz, I have some of those Deborah Sampson flags.
Okay, maybe we can do like, uh, an alternating theme or something like that.
I'm sure. I did speak to Roxanne for the flags that are going to be ordered. I have to reach out to the Boy Scout troop. Um, we already have the list ready that Kathy Ferguson will read and I'll update you with more as they come in.
And then we also have the folks from Energy Source, which is our main vendor on green communities grants. They are conducting a new evaluation of all of our town buildings. They were out on site a few days ago. So I expect maybe some new and different options available to us potentially for future grant applications. So more to come on that.
Great. Thank you, Liz. So Bree, are, is it planning, are you planning a Memorial Day parade? Is that what I'm gleaning from this discussion?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
We haven't had one in two years.
Okay.
But everything's been lifted. Get some people involved.
See if you get Sartreck again with the little, uh, tractors for the kids.
Bees and the cows, those were, yeah. Maybe we could get one.
I'm working on it and see what we can get for some antique vehicles and of course get the, I'm sure Scott's always willing to help and we'll get the town green and the cemetery, all that.
Bree, the people, uh, the antique vehicles don't have to be people in town, right?
No, no.
Okay, let me, uh, look into that. I know a couple of people who have some, uh, older, older equipment.
Yeah, John, you might want to reach out to, um, to Howard Randall. I think he's part of that Model T Club. And, um, Bob Norvish, who used to live in Plimpton, is very active too. I think Bob was either a former president or is president now. So, um, you know, then we may be able to, um, to network and, um, get some, a lot of old vehicles to participate.
Bree, do you, uh, you must reach out to Howard anyways, because he's usually in it, I've noticed.
Well, well, so with the one year that we had all the antique vehicles. So usually I have, um, I'll have older vehicles. Some of the Jeeps and things like that. And then of course we get all the tractors and hopefully I can, I'd love to have some more vehicles, John, if you can help me out with that.
I'd be glad to try that, yeah. I think maybe we can, uh, contact one of the clubs.
Yeah, I can reach out to Bob Norvish too and have him, um,
That'd be great.
Contact, um, Bree. So Liz, are we going to put anything on our, um, on the, the social media page about this to let people know and to start to?
I think I'll, um, if it's okay, I'll work with Bree and Kathy Ferguson on that and we'll put together something and get it out there for people.
Great. Awesome. Thank you very much. So, um, Bree, one last question about Memorial Day Parade or Memorial Day. Um, are we going to have, um, new flags on all of our, um, poles and will the poles be done by then too? Do you know?
That's what we're hoping that Liz is working on.
Yeah. Yeah. So the poles at the town green and the one at 106, the refurbishments are all finished. And, um, we got new flags for those as part of that project.
Beautiful. Oh, that sounds great.
Yeah. I'll have one of the scouts do that hopefully. So I'm going to reach out to them because I need to ask him about having the kids help to mulch. And then I know that they get a bag, a badge for placing the, um, the wreaths and things like that. But really kind of just started, we started last week and Kathy put together the program. But I need to reach out to the Boy Scouts and I know that they go camping that night before. And I think a lot of their things have been listed, lifted as well. Opening doors since the COVID restrictions have lifted.
So Bree, weren't we going to this year try to, um, let other or coordinate with other town boards, um, fire department, police department so that, um, we're all working together, um, and getting the same materials? I wonder, that's something we had talked about in the past. For decorating so that, um, everybody isn't hitting up, um, people individually so that we're, you're, we're all working together as, um, as a town to, um, have a, um, a consistent, um, decorating look and that, um, you know, in, in the past, it's all been, everybody's done their own thing. So I don't know if, um, that's something that you want to undertake, um, organizing that.
Usually it goes, usually it does go through our office, Christine. It was the one time that we had a little bit of a, somebody went off on their own.
Okay.
That's been, and they went out to tractor supply, but that shouldn't happen again. I'm going to reach out to the same businesses that we've always done, which has been one in Texas Provide, Sunrise Gardens, um, the Scouts. I don't know who else I have, but Scott Sartreck.
Okay.
I know that, uh, John Chu said they're going to do the touch a truck. We'll have the bike out. I have to reach out to, um, Ian Hoffman and speak with him as well. We're really in the beginning phases of it. I should know much more by our next meeting.
Great. Okay. Great. Okay. All right. That sounds good. Maybe we'll put it on the agenda then for you to give us an update.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Perfect. All right. So under correspondence, looks like we've received something from Cape Cod Getaway for a multiple sclerosis bike ride and they want to use the town roads, June 25th and 26th?
Yes.
All right. This is an annual event, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Do we, we don't require, well, everybody else, we require what? The police, highway, fire, everyone to be aware of this. I don't think there's any, I don't think the Board of Health usually has any involvement in this, do they?
I don't think so because they're not serving food.
Okay. Okay. Or drinks. Okay. So we'll be the first ones to, to sign off on this and then it will do, go the rounds?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. John or Mark, do you have any concerns about this?
No, I think we've done it annually and it's been fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Look forward to it.
All right. So I'll make a motion that we authorize Cape Cod Getaway to use town roads on June 25th and 26th of this year for their MS bike ride, providing that they get all of the necessary sign offs from the different department heads that would be necessary for this. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Roll call vote, Mr. Trainer.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay. Bree, question for you. You may, I don't know if you're going to know the answer to this. Are, is there going to be a strawberry shortcake this year or no?
I do not know that.
Last year.
We haven't had anything for two years.
Okay. I don't remember who sponsored it.
I'm not sure who's in charge of it now.
Okay. I was just curious.
I didn't know if that was a Paze event or not.
No.
I don't think it was Paze. It might've been the Scouts, but, but I'm not sure to tell you the truth who was the sponsor of that. Okay. I was just curious.
Do you want me to look into it?
Nope. I was just curious to see if they had reached out to you. Cause all right. So next on the agenda is the minutes from March 14th that Bree put together for us. Any questions or concerns?
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay. And these are the, the minutes that, that Bree amended. Okay. All right. So I'll make a motion. We accept the minutes from March 14th as written. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Roll call vote, Mr. Trainer.
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay. All right. Thanks, Bree. Nicely done. All right. So before we do rants and raves, our next meeting will be on the 11th of April, followed by the 25th and will, I don't know if we'll be working with finance committee on both of those meetings, Liz, or just maybe the second?
The 25th.
Okay. All right. Perfect. And then maybe on the 11th, we'll have more that we can do on the, the use of the old townhouse for that mediation group or meditation group. Great. Thank you.
So on the 11th, should we be thinking about going down the list of articles? Not, not to vote, but to see if there's some discussion ahead of the vote on the 25th.
I think that would make sense. Why don't we put it on the agenda as its own agenda item instead of just under town meeting prep and you can go through them. And that way if we need to follow up with anyone, we can do that.
Great idea.
Yeah. Yeah, that is excellent. Yeah, it'd be nice to have both the special and the, the annual that we can review just so that we have an idea of what we've got ahead of us at town meeting. Yes. All right. Who'd like to go first for rants and raves?
I'm glad to go. And my rave is for the town administrator position in general and for Liz's work in that position in particular. And particularly thinking back, maybe a decade ago, when I first started out as a selectman, long before town administrator, even before town coordinator. This was easily a 20 hour a week job and often meetings four nights a week. And I remember all too well, walking around sleep deprived most of my life. And it is such a treat now to have the town administrator, which we still have tons of work to do. We have a selectman, but the chance of somewhat less of that work and for it to kind of be at a higher level and proactive. And I'm real appreciative of that evolution over time. And then to be more specific, for us to be so comfortable renewing the three year contract for Liz is just one more level with how blessed we are. And so I'm appreciative and glad to rave about each of those things.
It was were dark days, no doubt, when, when we did the work. Yeah, it was, it was a full time job on top of your full time job. And, and it just seems like we were chasing our tails a lot of the time that we really didn't get to get to any of the real work because we were so busy doing the day to day stuff that we could never really look at the big picture. So I agree, having Liz here has given us the ability to, to work on much bigger projects that are very impactful to the town. So I agree wholeheartedly that it has made such a difference. And the, the quality of the work that, that she does and the way she represents us is so professional and top notch. I couldn't ask for more. So agreed. My, mine is more of a rant. It's just the world and Iran and nuclear. It's just, I don't know, sometimes it just seems like we're in such a crazy place that I'm so happy to, to be here in this little part of the world where it's, it's just, I just feel so lucky and blessed to, to live in Plimpton with so many wonderful people. And we don't have a lot of the challenges that other parts of the world do. So that's my rave, rant and rave.
So my rave, I guess I better rave about Elizabeth here. I do, I often think of just the sheer complexity of government today that I don't see how we could run it if we were still in the position of 10 years ago. The state mandates, the federal government, all these things that come down on us that loses great process skills. Save us from all being in jail, I think, at times. My rave is, looking back is just the volunteers we have in town. I know we've said it before, but just the sheer number of people who are willing to step up, put in the hours, no pay, do things like planning and conservation. You know, it's, we don't always agree, but we've got a wonderful town here and it shows up when people come through and talk about it now. I was at the annual meeting for the Chamber of Commerce and I was stopped by a number of real estate people who said, who were just kind of gushing about Plimpton. You know, they keep hearing about it now because people want to move here. Of course, they're driving the prices up, but that's, you know, that's the yin and the yang. So I, I'm with you, Christine. I'm, I'm just totally delighted that my roots are here, my kids are here, you know, it's been great.
All right. Well, we have wrapped up a, a meeting for tonight. So next meeting will be on April 11th. We'll see you all then. So at this point, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? All right. Roll call vote, Mr. Trainer.
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. All right. Good night, everyone.
Good night.